Special session? I'm gonna open the special session of the Eagle Mountain Community Facilities Board. And have a roll call, please.
What?
Sorry.
Chairman Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Board member Yeats.
Present.
Board member Lejeune.
Yes.
Board member Brown.
Yes.
Board member Hampton. Vice Mayor Elke.
Yes.
And board member Dickey.
Yes. Any super cards?
No, Timmy.
Consideration of approving the Eagle Mountain Community Facilities District Board meeting minutes of August 2nd, 2012.
Mayor, so move.
Any super cards?
No, Timmy.
Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Chairman, seven zero.
I'm gonna open the public hearing regarding resolution, EMCSC 2013-01, approving the tentative budget of the district for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2013, and ending June 30th, 2014, setting the hearing date for the budget and annual assessment.
Chairman Kavanaugh, members of the board, Eagle Mountain Community Facilities District was formed in town council nineteen ninety-six for the purpose of constructing infrastructure in Eagle Mountain subdivision. Um, the town council serves as a governing board for the district, the annual expenditures for the district are for repayment of the bonds and, uh, were issued to pay for the subdivision infrastructure. Annual cost is repaid through an ad valorem tax collected by the property owners within the district themselves. Um, the levy is estimated to be one dollar and eighty-four cents for one hundred of such values compared to a dollar fifty-six last year.
Okay, uh, any questions from the board? Okay, then, um, I will close. No super cards. Close the public hearing. Consideration of resolution, EMCSC 2013-01, as just presented. Any further discussion? I have a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the Eagle Mountain Community Facilities District Resolution Number, uh, 2013-01, the tentative budget for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2013.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Chairman, seven zero.
Okay. Uh, need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Now, I will open the special session of the Cottonwoods Maintenance District Board, and a roll call, please.
Chairman Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Board member Yeats.
Present.
Board member Lejeune.
Yes.
Board member Brown. Board member Dickey. Vice Mayor Elke. Board member Hampton.
Any super cards?
No, Timmy.
Consideration of approving the Cottonwoods Maintenance District Board meeting minutes of August 2nd, 2012.
Mayor, so move.
And no super cards? Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Chairman, seven zero.
I'll open the public hearing regarding resolution, CND 2013-01, approving the tentative budget of the district for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2013, and ending June 30th, 2014, setting the hearing date for the budget and general and annual assessment.
Chairman Kavanaugh, members of the council, the Cottonwoods Maintenance District was formed by the town council in June of nineteen ninety-nine for the purposes of improving the common areas of the Cottonwoods subdivision. Town council serves as a governing board for the district, the maintenance district provides the maintenance for the common areas which is performed by the town of Fountain Hills. The annual cost is repaid through an annual property tax assessment per property owned or levied by the town and collected by Mayor Colby County. Estimated levy for the fiscal year thirteen fourteen is eighty-three dollars and fifteen cents, which includes the annual contract costs for landscaping as well as established a reserve amount for the exterior of the wall maintenance. Total impact for the budget is four thousand eight hundred and twenty-three dollars.
Okay, uh, any discussion? Any super cards?
No, Timmy.
Alright, close the public hearing, consideration of resolution, CND 2013-01, as just presented. Any further discussion? Can I have a motion? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Chairman, seven zero.
And I will adjourn, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, now we'll move on to the regular session. Please have a one rise for flag reason.
Put reason to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. Sister Freeman from Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints.
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful to meet here at this city council meeting. We're grateful for this many blessings that thou be stowed upon each of us, we're grateful for this beautiful day. We're grateful for this land of freedom and the many rights and privileges and freedoms that we enjoy. We're grateful for the men and women who serve in the armed services, pray that thou will bless and protect them and their families, we're grateful for their sacrifice. We pray for the leaders of this city, uh, state, and nation, we'll bless them with wisdom and integrity, uh, as they govern. We're grateful for this opportunity to express the concerns and needs of this community, we pray for thy guidance this night, and we say this in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you so much for joining us, Ken. And another roll call, guys.
Mayor Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Councilmember Yeats.
Present.
Councilmember Dickey. Councilmember Lejeune. Councilmember Hampton. Vice Mayor Elke. And Councilmember Brown.
Alright, mayor's report. Forgot I've worn my Falcon gloves, as you can see. The downhill high school baseball team won the Division III State Championships on Saturday night at the Pride Stadium when they beat Empire with a score of five to four. The final two games of the state playoffs were both played at the Pride Stadium where Friday defeated Steel Valley with a score of seven-one, which advanced them to the final game to be played on Saturday night. Congratulations to all the coaches and the players for being the 2013 Division III State Champ. Please come up, please come up forward here, I'm gonna take a picture, uh, as I call your names. Paul Vinyaskey. Ethan Fett.
You don't have to take here.
Yeah. Just come right up here. Nick Fortisjack. Justin Stuber. David Byrne. Luke Hart. Daniel Odasis. Devin Foyle. Corey Kukala. Kenny Camara. Andrew Vinyaskey. Josh Tann. Dakota Nighthart. Sam Store. Cameron Russo. Cole Miles. Brady Hartman. Andy Swift. Nick Larson. Alice Fortisjack. And Quentin Donahue. Now, let's ask the coaches to come up. Mike Bagulio. Brian Romanek. Pat Gamel. Carl Galetti. Chris Peterson. And Matt Pugliano.
Mayor, maybe we could, um, if we could get them together, we'd like to get a photo op and have the mayor stand, the council stand behind them. Beep popping. Hands behind your back. Lick breath.
I, so I, I guess about a two minute timer, which I can, I think I can squeeze in, I may not need all my notes then. First of all, I wanna, I wanna thank, uh, all my assistant coaches, Coach Romanek, Coach Hamel, Coach Galetti, Coach Peterson, and Coach Pugliano, they are all hugely dedicated volunteers that work with the kids of this town, and you can see there's a bunch of good looking gentlemen here that they work with and has helped turn into, um, wonderful young men, and also wanna thank their parents, the ones that are here tonight as well, because without their support, uh, we wouldn't be here right now. Uh, secondly, I wanna thank, uh, my best friend Janine, who listens to coaches after hours talks, uh, going over the hitters, because that's a, that's quite a, quite a burden. And then most importantly, I wanna thank my two bigots fans, who are my, my, uh, daughter Samantha Madeline, who have been with me from every game since I've been in Fountain Hills. Maddie was actually born the year I came to Fountain Hills, the last time I was here doing this, she was on my hip as I was talking, so, thank you ladies. Um, just a little bit about our season, we, uh, started off ten and oh, and we also had a tremendous start, and we were dominating our other ti, the other teams. Um, but that wasn't what defined our season, what defined our season was actually a loss. And when I knew that this team had what it takes to win a state championship, was we were at Notre Dame, and Notre Dame, as you know, ended up being the Division II State Champion. Big, strong school, a lot of big, strong kids, and it looked like a professional football team, well, not a baseball team. And we were ahead of them six to four in the seventh inning. And we ended up losing the game, uh, seven to six, in the bottom of the seventh inning, and it was a tough loss, and our kids, you know, I was thinking, you know, I don't believe in moral victories, but I'm thinking, well, maybe the kids are satisfied because at least they hung with them. But when I got on the bus after the game, I could tell that they were disappointed they lost to Notre Dame, meaning they expected to win. And from that point on, we built off of that, that loss, and base, baseball is learning from failure, and is a game of failure, so they persevered and went beyond that, and that's why we're in the state tournament, because in the state tournament, we were behind in three of the four games. And ended up winning each of those games, including the final, being behind four to nothing at one point in time. So, they expected excellence from themselves, they expected to win, and again, that's why we're here. On behalf of Fountain Hills High School Athletic Department, the baseball team, my coaches, our families, we'd like to present Mayor Kavanaugh with a ball signed by all the players and coaches, and our, so we're bringing a state championship. Well, I'm, well, I'm here. Uh, sorry, um, had something very exciting happen to the athletic department last night, just afternoon, actually, just found out from AIA. Uh, Fountain Hills High School was recognized with the Don F. Stone Annual Award, and what that is, it signifies a combination of all 2A and 3A schools throughout the entire state, which is over eighty schools. Uh, we were recognized as the outstanding athletic department in the state, and that's based on points scored by each team in the state tournament, so many points, depending on how far they advance. So you've heard of the Silver Cup in, in college athletics, where Stanford wins all the time, well, Fountain Hills won that, the Arizona, um, version of that yesterday. Thank you for having us, Mayor Kavanaugh.
It's our pleasure.
Go Falcons!
Thank you so much, congratulations, guys, thank you all for coming, and we're gonna put this in our display case outside for everybody to look at, we're very proud of you, thank you.
Did I fall down?
Yes.
Hold on, it didn't hurt. Where am I?
Mayor's report.
That was it, that's what I'm doing. I'm gonna sit back.
Alright, can we have any, uh, super cards?
No, ma'am.
Ma'am?
I need a personal privilege announcement, if that's okay with you, I just, uh, always remember, this time of year, our friend and colleague Kathy Nicola, the years are going so fast, uh, she passed away on, um, the nineteenth of May in, uh, two thousand and five, I just wanted to, uh, do a shout out to her and her family, uh, she's a fellow Jessica Gordon fan, and, uh, we miss her.
Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Consideration of approving the town council meeting minutes from May first and second, 2013. Consideration of approving the contract, C, 2014, debt one oh one with CNS Services Incorporated, not due until seventy-five thousand for six three services beginning July first, 2013, and ending June 30th, 2014. Consideration of approving the contract with Towns Village, contract for fiscal year 2013, 2016, home delivered meals in the amount not due to four hundred and twenty-two thousand, eighty-one dollars and fifteen cents. Consideration of resolution, 2013-21, approving an intergovernmental agreement with Mayor Colby County Animal Care and Control relating to animal shelter, beginning July first, 2014, through June 30th, 2018, with the estimated annual cost of nineteen thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed?
Mayor, so move.
In a second. And a roll call, roll please.
Councilmember Yeats.
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton.
Aye.
Councilmember Lejeune. Councilmember Dickey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Elke. Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
And Mayor Kavanaugh.
And I.
Chairman, seven zero.
Regular agenda items, consideration of resolution, 2013-19, adopting the maximum amount for the town Fountain Hills fiscal year 2013-14, tentative budget with appropriate directions to publish and doc, said documents in accordance with state law, the council may address any or all items contained in the budget document and initiate any changes prior to the adoption, Ken.
Mayor Kavanaugh, I'm gonna go to the council, um, you have before you the tentative budget to, to be adopted after the, uh, number of special meetings that the, the council have, had, uh, recently, the, um, by core services, you'll notice the public serv, uh, public safety, six mil, six and a half million, admin, two and a half, downtown is two, two point one, development services, four point one, community services, two point one million, debt service, two point five, special revenue funds, one point five. Capital, uh, intended this year is nineteen million, two forty-eight, and we have an internal fund of six fifty-eight. With a total budget, um, maximum expenditure for the tentative budget is forty-one million, six hundred and fifty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars. It's a recommendation to approve the tentative budget. Staff would be happy to answer any specific questions regarding that, that is the number that we left with at the last meeting.
Any questions from council? Any super cards?
No, ma'am.
Alright, I have a motion to accept the...
Mayor? Move to approve resolution, 2013-19, adopting the maximum amount for the town's fiscal year 2013-14 tentative budget.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Chairman, seven zero.
Consideration of accepting the bronze sculpture titled Ronald Reagan for public display in Fountain Park.
Community Services Director has a, a report regarding the art piece. Bear with me one second, please. Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, um, joining me this evening has, that has been the standard practice, includes, uh, both Terry Miles and Sandy Thompson from the Public Art Committee. Uh, attached is a letter that we received on behalf of the Public Art Committee, asking for, uh, the town's consideration, acceptance of a piece titled Ronald Reagan, which depicts former President Reagan in Western attire. Uh, the location, as I indicated to you, is listed in the information that I provided, um, the potential location is over by the, uh, where we have previously priced the other presidents, including at this point Teddy Roosevelt, and also, um, Mr. Lincoln. Um, this particular piece has a value of forty-five thousand dollars, which was a done in turn, meaning an annual cost for ensuring the piece for liability of a hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty cents. Uh, the piece was done by color artist Mark Lundin, and is being donated by residents Brian and Judy Segadelli, Segadelli?
Segetti.
Segetti, thank you. Uh, with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions, and, uh, if I cannot answer, I'm sure Mr. Miles or, um, Mr. Thompson could.
Any questions from council? Any super cards?
How many?
Uh, Councilman Brown, can I have a motion, please? Thank you, mayor, firstly, I'd like to spend a second and thank Brian and Judy Segetti for the generous offer of, of purchasing this, um, uh, monument of, of President Reagan. They, I understand, would like to have the unveiling in October when they are back in town, and so we have something to truly look forward to this coming October. And with that being said, I move to accept the bronze sculpture titled Ronald Reagan for public display in Fountain Park.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Chairman, seven zero.
Thank you.
Much. Consideration for the town of Fountain Hills to intervene in Epcor, Chaparral City Water Company, Arizona Corporation Commission Water Rate Hearing.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, um, staff is requesting that, uh, council give consideration for motion to intervene in the application for Chaparral City Water Company, uh, increase for rates and charges. Currently, there's a proposal for thirty-four point eight percent rate increase, uh, we are a, uh, ver, a large user, um, of the water, uh, approximately a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year, um, is, in our budget for the use of the water. It would be prudent, it is a quasi judicial process in front of the Arizona Corporation Commission, and we re, we recommend that if you don't do this, it's, it's not, you, you're not gonna be able to, um, express your position on that, uh, at a public hearing process, rather than being in a, an intervene, uh, as an intervener. So, my recommendation is, is to, uh, um, intervene, um, and consider, should we need to discuss anything, at least we'll have a, a seat at the table.
Any questions, okay? Councilman Dickey?
Thank you, mayor, um, when we first met with them, um, and we, they discussed some of the infrastructures and that kinda thing, and they talked about raising the rate, do you remember what that was, um, at that time?
Um, Mayor Kavanaugh, I, I haven't met with them, I'm sorry.
Mayor, do you remember that? When we, you know, neighbors originally brought up to us about, um, their infrastructures, and it wasn't this amount, I remember, we thought it was sort of like made sense, so, do we, you know, are, are we already protecting this, or are we just getting ourselves in wrong?
Well, we're getting in a, we're getting in our position so that we, uh, in that process, is that we would actually have a seat at the table, so that we could, if we ch, so choose to, but if you don't do that, you know, you're not gonna have that opportunity.
Okay, thank you, so we don't have the actual table that we had gotten in that initial meeting with them?
Only, only the, only the application, that I've seen.
Okay, thank you.
Any super cards?
No, ma'am.
Alright, um, can I get a motion to step?
Mayor, so move.
Do you have a question?
No, just go ahead and make a motion.
Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Chairman, seven zero.
Consideration of resolution, 2013-27, approving the town Fountain Hills personnel policies and procedures amended and restated July first, 2013.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, uh, since the current town, uh, Fountain Hills Personnel Policies, uh, Employee Manual was approved back in two thousand and four, um, and up, they, I started looking at this about approximately ten months ago, with, uh, our Human Resource Administrator, she's been working on it since, and, uh, we have a number of areas we'd like to, um, to discuss and, and have consideration for approval for that, and I'd like to ask, um, um, Ms. McIntosh to come to, uh, and give a presentation for that, and have, answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ken. Mayor Kavanaugh and council members, um, you have before you this evening a draft of an updated personnel policies and procedures for town staff, um, or as we more commonly refer to it as an employee manual. As Ken had said, the current, um, manual for employees was approved by the council in two thousand and four, so this new manual has been updated to reflect changes in laws since that time, but it's also been reorganized, renumbered, and revised. Um, so it's taken some time to do that, and it's staff's goal in the future to, um, bring individual policy changes to you on a more consistent basis, so we don't have to redo the whole, whole manual in the future again. Um, with that being said, I wanted to bring up the... Um, as Ken had indicated, we've been working on this over the last ten months, um, and I just wanted to kinda walk you through the process that we've taken over the last ten months. Um, Ken and I looked at the current employee manual, and, um, she followed what, um, policies that we might wanna change or update, um, and so I drafted those policies, and then I, we had an internal committee made up of a representative from community services, and representative from development services, who sat down with me, and also gave their suggestions, um, or ideas of what wasn't clear to them, what was confusing, so we made improvements that way. Um, then we also, um, asked all the staff to give their input, and they had some very good suggestions from staff, some that we implemented, most of them that we did, um, some of them that we didn't, because it would've, um, involved an increase to the town's budget to do so, so we didn't do those. But most of them were just for clarity, they thought maybe a current policy was a little confusing when they read it, so we rewrote it, uh, to make it more clear, um, and again, they made changes, as long as they didn't, um, involve an increased cost to the town. Uh, then we took the manual and gave it to the, the draft manual to the town manager and all the directors, and gave them a time frame to review it, give us feedback, um, and they did so. We made those changes, and then we gave it to an employment attorney, and he had it for about a month, um, to review it and put in some legal leaves, was very helpful with that, and so, that brings us to tonight, and we have it before the council. As you can see from this slide, um, a few policies were eliminated, we tried to stick to essential policies for an employer and eliminate too many detailed procedures, that just gets confusing for staff and it's hard to enforce for supervisors. Many of the policies were combined to reduce redundancy, and a few policies were eliminated from the current manual because they're included in our loss control program, so it was a little redundant to have them in both places. And I'm not gonna read through all these, hopefully you had a chance to review them, if you have any questions on this first screen, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
Okay. And the second screen is more of, of the same policies that we deleted, combined, um, any questions on this screen? Next screen. Okay, this screen is new policies that we added, so we're past the, um, deleted ones and combined ones, um, there were four new policies that we thought were important to add to the manual. The first one was political activity, the second one, training funding, this is funding for staff that goes beyond the tuition reimbursement policy. We also added an iPad iPhone use policy, because a lot of people have iPads now, council has them, and then, um, with today's, uh, technology, a social media policy. So, those are pretty common sense changes, I think, so far, um, then we went into some policy changes where it actually contains the intent of the policy. And the first one was the introductory employment period. The current manual states that a new hire, um, can use personal time and vacation, uh, excuse me, and sick time within their, their introductory period, the first six months of employment. And we would like to change that to where they cannot use personal time, they can still use sick time if they're sick or fit, um, but not use personal time until they've completed their six months introductory period. their six months introductory period. The second, um, change to intent was for vacation and sick leave. One of the suggestions that we received from staff when we, when we asked for their input was for eligible part-time staff to, um, change the title of their vacation accrual to paid time off accrual. Um, doesn't, it doesn't, um, we didn't, did not increase, uh, increase the rate of the accrual, um, but it's less confusing because now they, if they're sick or they take vacation or they just want a personal day, they have that bank of accrual and they can call it whatever they want and get paid for it as long as they have those hours in their accrual bank. So it's just a change in terminology, does not increase the accrual rate at all. The third, um, change to intent was for holidays. Um, as you recall, before staff went to a four-ten work week, um, we were paid for ten holidays a, a calendar year and at eight hours per holiday. So to make it less confusing, instead of saying that we have ten holidays, or ten days, we now say we have eighty hours. It just makes it more clear for staff, it did not increase the amount of paid time off or holiday pay, um, but they'll have a bank just like they do with vacation time and sick time that they draw from what they want to be paid for the holiday. Um, so it just makes it a little more clean cut for the staff, um, did not increase anything for the town or more accrual. Um, the other change in that policy was for the part-time staff, um, or for, I should say for non-exempt employees who are oftentimes required to work on a holiday, mainly this refers to the part-time staff who works out in the parks, because they have to work holidays weekends, the parks never close. Currently, we've been paying them two and a half times their hourly rate when they work on a holiday. Um, I think that was just, uh, an error when we wrote the policy and so we, we went along with that, um, but we would like to change that to two times their hourly rate when they work on a holiday. So it'd be a slight decrease to those people when they work so they would get their hours of holiday pay and their hours of regular pay, which would equal two times their hourly Probably the biggest, um, change to intent that we're bringing before the council tonight is a change to our vesting schedule for our retirement plan. It's a 401A, as you know, we do not contribute to social security and we're not part of the Arizona State Retirement System, but we do have a mandatory 401A retirement plan. The current vesting schedule is as it reads at the top. An employee has to be here, um, complete three years of service before they are vested in any part of the town's contributions. We would like to change that to the second schedule down there where they're twenty percent vested after one year, forty after two years, sixty after three, eighty after four, and it'd still be a hundred percent vested after five. The reason this came to light is we've had some employees, um, in the past that had to leave the town services prior to completing three years of service, to no fault of their home, oh, and perhaps their spouse got relocated and they had to move or whatever the situation may be. And during exit interviews, a couple of them said to me, you know, it's really not fair to us because we don't contribute to social security, so we get no match from the town for that, and if we leave before three years of service, we get no match for the town for, um, for a 401A contribution. So we've really gone almost three years, if they've been here that long, with nothing. And so they kind of lose out and that made sense to me and that's, that's why we're, um, submitting this proposal tonight for a change in the vesting schedule. I don't know what cost the town would incur for this, it's really going to depend on a lot of different factors of, you know, what the turnover rate would be, how many years of service, how much money they're making at the time, so it's kind of hard to predict, but I think the cost will be minimal, um, to the town if you approve this plan. The next change was for deferred compensation. Um, in addition to our mandatory retirement plan, we had a, have a voluntary deferred compensation plan and we're just making this available to all employees regardless of how many hours they work. Um, it doesn't cost the town anything to do that and it's, according to the IRS regulations, it's, it's okay to do that. Um, and I checked the ICMA, all we have to do is give them a letter stating we would like them to be able to be eligible and therefore they can contribute money voluntarily if they want, um, pre-tax dollars into our deferred compensation plan. It's a little added benefit for the part-time people at no cost to the town. The next policy is tuition reimbursement. Um, we increased the amount that we reimbursed by five hundred dollars. Again, we didn't want to add to the town's costs too much, but since the rate was back at the two thousand and four rate, we thought we could increase it a little bit. We don't have, um, very many staff that take advantage of this policy, at least not recently. Um, but if they do, we'd like to increase it by five hundred dollars so they have a little bit more towards the college education from the town. And grievances, policy fourteen oh two, um, we eliminated the section on selection of a grievance committee and replaced it with a section on town manager's final step. And the reason we did that is we've had, um, a grievance in the past, not too often, thank goodness, um, but because we're so small, right now we only have about fifty FTE employees, nobody wanted to serve on that grievance committee because we all know each other, we're friends with each other, we're, you know, almost like family. And so, so nobody said, I don't want to take sides, I don't want to be on it. Um, so the time that we did have a grievance, we, we got a hearing officer from the outside, a judge from Scottsdale volunteered his time, so that worked out well. Um, but we're even smaller now than we were when we had that, that last grievance, so we're proposing that we just do away with a grievance committee, but you'll see in that final step from the town manager that he has the option of, um, selecting an outside committee if he wishes to do so during a grievance procedure. So he could pick maybe members of a community or, or whatever he wanted to do with that instead of having that internal grievance committee and putting staff on the, um, for that. So, that's it for our changes. Um, our, our manual, the proposed manual is actually a few more pages longer than our current manual, but that's due to having sample forms in there that are specific to certain policies. We wanted to put them in there so staff knows what they should use if they are requesting time or, or whatever the policy may be. But in fact, the manual is actually twenty fewer policies than the current manual. So that was, um, you know, when our employment attorney looked at it, he says, whoa, this is a, a big manual, you know, he says, you can't stream like this and still keep the essential policies in there. So I think we were successful at doing that. So I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Justice.
Thanks, Joan. Uh, just one on, add a correction, the last five years, how many new employees have we hired or on, on an annual basis?
The last five years, not really. I would say more part-time staff because we have a turnover, maybe more of the recreation assistants, you know, the part-time that work out in the parks, because they don't work real, real good hours, you know, they have to work holidays and nights and weekends and stuff, but for full-time staff, very few in the last five years, maybe, maybe three.
Okay. Madam Mayor, along the same lines, if, if we didn't experience the crash that we did on, on a normal type operation, what would you anticipate on a town this size or a staff this large that you would have on a, ongoing basis?
Uh, probably, I would say for, we're growing, you know, like we had in the past with building and stuff, probably seven or eight, probably double.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Any special thoughts?
No ma'am.
All right, can I ask, press the motion? Move to approve the town of Fountain Hills personnel policies and procedures amended and restated July one, twenty thirteen.
Second.
Any other discussion? Go in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor seven zero.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to open the public hearing regarding ordinance thirteen dash oh five, an amendments to section eleven dash one dash three of the town code. The doctor of the ordinance would include a definition for graffiti and add a requirement to keep walls, building, fences, et cetera, free of graffiti at all times. And Bob?
Thank you, ma'am. This is a request by code enforcement staff to amend the town code. The proposal is to include new definitions of graffiti and to add a requirement to keep walls, buildings, fences, et cetera, free of graffiti at all times. The current town code only prohibits the application of graffiti, it doesn't contain language that requires removal. Once applied, there's currently no real mechanism for code to require that the graffiti be covered over or removed. Most property owners voluntarily have graffiti removed, but occasionally code encounters individuals that are unwilling or unable to remove or cover up the graffiti. This amendment adds new section eleven one three A definition, which clarifies what graffiti is and who the responsible parties are when graffiti occurs. It also adds a new subsection eleven one three G graffiti prohibited, which requires graffiti removal and outlines the mechanisms for abatement should that become necessary. Staff recommends town council approve the amendments to section eleven one three of the town code as presented and outlined in the staff report. Thank you.
Questions? Vice Mayor.
Bob, uh, how often have you had, had an issue where someone won't cover up the graffiti or has not covered up the graffiti?
Most recently, there were, have there been two issues, I'd say, within the last couple of years.
Okay, and prior, prior to that, how many issues have come up?
Not very many. Uh, usually people want to get rid of it.
And as far as the notice, when, uh, the, the proposed amendment, uh, regarding, uh, the notice of abatement, I, I have some concerns or just some questions, whether it's you or, or, or Andrew, Bob, is, as far as the notice, considering that we have some snowbirds, I see that we can do it by regular mail, personal service, or posting it on the subject property, um, any ideas, has there been any discussions as to what the method is going to be? Because with the snowbirds that we have, if somebody...
Yeah.
Graffiti's up their house, you post it on their door, they don't get it, and then you, you cover it up and then send them a bill for it, so I'm a little concerned about that.
We haven't had to do that yet. You, if it's a snowbird, typically Roy will post it on the property, but he'll also then, uh, find out who owns it and get the contract immediately, throughout the state, he'll usually call.
Okay, Mayor, one, one for me. Uh, not too long ago, probably about nine, it was probably about twelve, fifteen months ago, we had, uh, some residents that called and they had somebody graffiti their back wall and they were actually unable to cover it up themselves and Heather Ware, volunteer coordinator, got some staff and other volunteers to get that went over and painted it up, covered it up. Um, what is staff's proposals or, or thoughts about residents that can't get out there and do it themselves? Yeah, I just don't want to get them sideways in a situation where they get a notice, they can't get it covered, and then they get a, get a bill basically for it.
Well, we haven't actually had to do any of that. I don't think we've done any actual graffiti abatement in the town. Um, volunteers are obviously going to be allowed to do it. Uh, if, if we have an issue where somebody just can't do it, um, they're unable to, then we'll, we'll ask Heather and if it's still not possible. I, Roy doesn't give, um, these notices first, he'll go up and talk to them first and find out whether or not, you know, what the situation is. Notice is more or less the last resort when we realize that nothing's going to happen and we actually are going to have to do an abatement. We, like I said, we haven't actually had to do that yet.
May I ask one more? Uh, this, this is for, for Andrew, like I said, um, in a, in a strange situation, Andrew, where someone refuses to pick, cover it up, they're served with a notice, um, and if, if we pass this, uh, town code, staff or contractor go on and paint over, um, what are the, any liability concerns as far as painting it over, you know, silly as matching the paint, somebody who does damage while they're on the property or anything like that, are there any, any thoughts about that that you may have?
Um, Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, that's pretty much a concern that we have with all of our code enforcement officers out and about doing things. Um, what we would likely do in a case like this is have a contractor who handles graffiti abatement, there are a number of cities and towns in the states that have a particular few that do the, the work very well, and then through our contracts with them would, would be our protection of the town for any damage they might do while they were there. Um, beyond that, uh, I don't know that we can really ensure much other than prudent employees.
And I, I think I would feel comfortable with a little bit more time than the ten days upon receiving the notice and, um, as far as being able to abate it, certainly if we have graffiti up, we want to make sure that gets covered sooner rather than later, but just in the spirit of snowbirds or people that, you know, if I get a notice today, it's going to take me a little bit of time to find somebody to contract, to get out there and get it done, work with their schedule as well, I think maybe twenty days might be a little bit better. And the last thing is, how, how are we going to confirm notice?
Uh, Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, I think that's really the thing that we were concerned about in terms of the ordinance is ensuring that notices deemed proper by simple first-class mail so that we're not required to do personal services, we might in another case. So I don't think there'll actually be a confirmation required under the code. I know that code enforcement procedure though is a lot of attempts at contact prior to actually just using the mail as the, the last resort service. Um, I'm hopeful that we don't have to get to that point, but every time they get to one of those gray areas, they generally call me and we talk about what steps do we need to go to next, particularly if we're going to enter on someone else's property and, and abate ourselves, um, we're usually more comfortable after we've made some form of contact, but sometimes it's a bank or someone else who just frankly won't respond.
Yeah, I have had some of these asking, uh, problems with this, which I already discussed with the enterance hand before the meeting. It's the, one was exactly the same as the vice mayor, we talked about the ten-day period and how that might be a little short for, uh, snowbirds, people on vacation in the summertime. So, um, I, I was going to bring it up to the council if the council would like to extend that a little bit beyond the ten days to give people a little bit more time. And the other thing that I was concerned about was putting notices on people's actual property. That's kind of like saying I'm not home to someone who might want to rob your house and the notice could be on the front door for a week or two weeks and, um, I was concerned about that type of a notice. Were we thinking about actually sticking it right on the door like we do for the businesses or is it going to be a little more discreet? Um, how's that going to work?
Well, usually, uh, this is going to be a typical situation, Roy has been in contact with them for well over a month before they're ever going to get a notice like this.
Okay, so the notice is then put on the door right away?
The notice is more or less our last resort saying, look, either get it done or we're going to have to do it for you.
Okay, so the mail, the mails, just walk us through the procedure, you receive the graffiti, you send them...
We'll contact them usually by phone or in person if they're, if they're around...
Okay.
Uh, and find out what, what their plans are for abating it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and it goes on back and forth.
And you send, you send the first-class mail anyway or you just contact them over the phone?
Notice would be the first-class mail if we have to send it out. Usually it's just a verbal voluntary thing.
Okay, and if you can't get them on the phone, then you try to send them a letter?
Yeah, we would send them a letter. Um, typically the only ones that don't respond, like Andrew said, are the banks.
Mm-hmm, okay. Um, so I, I would just like to know how the rest of the council feels about maybe extending the ten-day. I was, I was concerned about that being a little short for even people who might be way on vacation. Um, I, I agree that we want to get rid of the graffiti as quickly as possible and I'm sure that someone who has it on their house is going to want to get rid of it as soon as possible, but, you know, if someone is a snowbird, they might have a handyman who normally takes care of their property and if they find out about it, they can contact that person to come and do it rather than have to pay the expense of the town doing it. So I'd be open to hear how the council feels about that for ten days.
Madam Mayor.
Justice.
Along the same lines, just keeping with some sort of precedence on any notice, I think thirty-day notice, um, not that I think anybody, no, not that anybody would take that full amount of time except the people that, um, probably are, are going to fight this anyway, will probably know that upfront, but, uh, when, when you start picking these arbitrary timelines, you know, why not seventeen days or twenty-three days? It's, I just kind of like the idea of some, keeping consistent somehow, and it seems anytime we get a notice from any group, it's usually a thirty-day notice.
This, the policy is consistent with our, our abatement policy for the swimming pools.
But that's a ten-day notice, I'm sorry.
Okay.
But that's a ten-day notice, correct?
Yeah, but that's after we've already had all our, our verbals and, so it's the same.
Justice.
I, I was just going to suggest, um, I mean, just from a legal standpoint, you have twenty days to, to file a response to a lawsuit if, if you aren't sued. And, and, and I agree that with the ten days for the pools because that's a public safety or a public health issue, so they should clean that sooner rather than later because of the issues with mosquitoes. But just, we're just, what we're talking about here is time to, to make the, to, um, clean off the graffiti or paint over or whatever it is that you're going to do. I'd be comfortable with the, with the twenty days and then, Andrew, just one question, uh, personal services that relates to, yeah, that's process serving, is that correct or is that staff under G once? I think a regular male personal service or posting on the subject property, personal service, process server or is that staff service?
In the time that we've actually had to do it, I think we've used process servers, but it's usually not required. Typically, our code enforcement officers out there and actually hands it to them and we achieve personal service that way.
Okay, I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
Justice.
Uh, I'm comfortable with the, the twenty days, maybe that could be included as a motion.
Okay. Everyone else seem to be in agreement, uh, anyone would object to the twenty days? All right, uh, any special thoughts?
No ma'am.
All right, um...
All right. Then I will close the public hearing first. Consideration of ordinance 13-05 as just present, well, it's not as just presented with the 20 days instead of the 10 days. Any further council discussion? And now, Vice Mayor, next motion please.
May I move to approve the proposed amendments to the Fountain Hills Town Code, section 11-1-3 regarding graffiti as presented and amended as we discussed, section G1 as it relates to the abatement timeframe from 10 days to 20 days.
One favor?
Aye.
Any comments? Ms. Evans, do? All right, and a final item. Discussion was possible, direction to staff relating to any item including the league of Arizona cities and towns, weekly legislative bulletin, or relating to any action proposed or pending before the state legislature, okay? And I think councilwoman Dickie had something first.
Yes, I wanted to ask you about the PPP counter proposal that you thought might come up yesterday.
Mm-hmm. Change if you want to, or you want me to?
Go ahead, take liberty to do that. He'll start and I'll shore it up.
All right. Well, I guess the first thing we want to say about every day changes. So whatever you heard yesterday is different today. It'll be different on Monday. We have a conference call first thing Monday to see what the latest latest is. But what we have so far is we've accepted the audit and the portal. The construction sale tax is going to remain the same. The big discussion now is still with the trades, the plumbing, the electrical. They will stay off, the state is proposing that they pay a point of sale, which actually according to the league reduces their taxes from 65% to 21%. So they're getting a tax break by that. The league is proposing to share the use tax as a way to mitigate the local impact. Then the state came back with a counter proposal saying that the only towns and cities that they were going to compensate were towns and cities of 5,000 or under. So we are objecting to that, of course, and 5,000 and under only four or five years. So everybody who, it's a small city or town that's going to lose out on this. The concern, of course, is that the big cities might go along with the compromise because with the point of sale and then having the big boxes, they're going to get that sales tax plus they will get the extra use tax. And if they go along with, if they go along with the 5,000 and under, then all the rest of us have to compensate the 5,000 and under towns with our share. So that's not fair either. So we're getting hit from all different directions. So we do have a conference call on Monday to protect that. Councilwoman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. The accounting system is already extremely difficult in trying to account for the monies in the construction industry and paying the correct amount. And if they separate the mechanic side of it, plumbing and the electrical system side of it, it's only going to get worse. I mean, it just continues to look uglier every time we talk about it. So what are the chances of just leaving it alone for a while?
Oh, that was the league's proposal, to leave it alone until we can get the actual figure. Because another big point is that they don't even have a definition of remodel yet. They're still working on what the definition is. And that's really important to us here since a lot of ours is going to be remodeling. So it's remodeled, you know.
The code, the construction code clearly spelt it out. One wall standing is remodeled.
They're working on their own definition of remodeling. It's going to be a while. So I just found out today that there's a lot of discussion in the budget. And because that is, might take a lot longer. It looks like we'll have a little bit more time to negotiate. Just if the budget goes too quickly, then we might go too quickly with a vote on this in the senate. And then it goes right back to ways and means, which we now passed it out, the original bill. So we'll know more on Monday. And now councilwoman Dickie wants to talk about her favorite topic.
Council 2404, which was the one that basically said that cities and towns cannot have further regulating residential energy consumption. It's still stalled. It still is not on the floor in the house. So I know that Ken, you were writing something to the governor because we were anticipating it going to the governor. But I wanted to just mention, since many of us have contacts and relationships with our house members, that should it be on the floor, because now they are kind of ramping up to get done maybe on Memorial Day, it could end up being something that's down on the floor because that's the last part of it. So if you wouldn't mind, maybe dropping a note to remind our own legislative, our house members about 2404 to try to prevent that even from getting to the governor. And which case, I think you said you had written a letter about that.
Well, also, Monday, we could try to bring the 2404 up with the league. We're actually getting briefed by the two legislative liaisons for the league and we can get them to brief us a little bit on more what we think we should be doing with that.
Thank you. That's great. I think they gave us a number of, I mean, your name, Ryan Peters, is somebody that's actually working on that bill. Two more bills, or two more objects. The election bills came out as kind of this last bit of 10 bills. They came out, all the budget bills, but the last one is the election bills. It has this kind of a mismatch. It's kind of all over the map on what's in this bill. I know Representative Uzanty, it's too bad she had to cancel it in the coming because I don't know if in that, I just looked at the fact sheet, and it does mention consolidated elections, but I'm not exactly sure what it does. So I don't know if it deals with mailing stuff or not. So we're still a little bit unsure about that, but it is, it's 1493, the last bill. And we'll see if that goes through. I know some of the other cities are waiting to hear what that does to their terms of office. But we don't have that yet. But ours is okay because we were already all set waiting till 2014. The HIRF stock, it's really coincidental, I guess, to just say that we all got this MAGS thing from your meeting, the regional council meeting. And just real quickly about her before I, and I'll just walk through these things really quickly. But the MAGS itself is saying that their challenge involves the highly used, the HIRF fund, which is the primary source of funding, workforce adjustment improvement, maintenance on roads and streets. Because as you know, the Prop 4, the whole transportation plan has been sort of stymied because of lack of funding. Part of that would have been something that we may have gotten the bus out to us. And so we know that now that's not part of it. But what I thought was interesting was during the recent state budget crisis, the legislature diverted more than $126 million from HIRF to support the Arizona Department of Public Safety. And this is where, Andrew, we talked a little bit, despite a statutory cap on such diversions of 20 million. In addition, last year about $109 million of HIRF were diverted to help balance the state general fund budget. So the amount total from HIRF purposes, $234 million, accounted for more than 19% of total HIRF collections for 2012. So despite an increase of $180 million in revenue that was collected since 2000, the funding actually allocated to cities and towns and counties is actually lower than it was in $2,000. And yet, of course, traffic volumes and populations and all those continues to grow. So, and given that all this PPP stuff could actually affect our budget, I know it's late to try and do anything for 2014. Now, I don't think we should go down there and try to change this budget that they're voting on as we see. But what I wanted to give you these papers was because it helps spell out what we have not realized in our budget for roads. It helps a little bit talk about why we were in the position we're in and why we had to take $2 million towards roads for next year and really have almost focused all of our attention on roads. So I just wanted you to see that. This is the distribution. And I didn't know until I read the HIRF, I mean, this MAGS thing that $20 million is the cap on the diversion. So, and then there was this article that the county supervisors are going to go to the legislature and try to get HIRF funding. One of their three columns of what they're going to try to do is restore HIRF funding to the counties. And they are going to, oh, and they said that they heard that there were no plans to eliminate the HIRF shift because, the DPS, because local governments benefit from having DPS patrols. I mean, I understand that on a visceral level, but, you know, really this is money. You can see on the first page where it's supposed to go. And you can see from the MAGS thing that we all got, it says may for, we just didn't watch this today. So I am asking if you would all be okay with directing our staff, you know, maybe after all the hell bells goes by with our budget and our budget, to maybe talk to the league about the possibility of the league joining the county supervisors because this is kind of an organizational thing that's going on. And then if the league isn't interested, then maybe, you know, we could take some action next year when we look at our legislative proposals and how to try to engage them into this important way of a long-term, at least somewhat of a revenue stream to us that is actually appropriately ours and it's been diverted for 12, 13 years. And if you see that article that mentions that Steve Trupi, who's our county supervisor, is on the committee there that is working on their legislative stuff. So maybe we don't have to do a vote or anything like that, but what we might want to, but maybe we could say we would approach the league to take this HIRF restoration seriously as an agenda item, much the way the county supervisors are doing. And that if we fail anywhere along the lines and maybe, I don't know, maybe pay or some of us could talk to the county supervisors, people that we know, ask them maybe what their approach is and see if we can get that. The only thing I don't have is Fountain Hills. What has it done to Fountain Hills? They know last year it was $155,000. But they had also diverted to MVD last year. So I don't know, I tend to have my hands around that. I tried to do a ratio and I think it might be like maybe $90,000. But I think about 10 years or something, even if it was $50,000, that's a something that changed for our little budget coming out of our roads on. So I would ask you to consider that. And maybe in September sometime, we could address this in a formal way as we go forward to the 14, 15 budget, which sounds like forever away. And then I'll stop talking about this.
All right. All right. Well, I guess we can, we can all look at what you've given us. We can talk to the league. Of course, we're always talking to them. And I think it's got a lot of good ideas that we need to look into because of course we need to protect our own money. And I know Ken also brought up to me the issue of, let's make sure that DPS is using the money that they're getting for roads, for highways, the way they're supposed to. And they're not making it for things that are not for you. Well, I don't know if we can get that information, but it's worth to look into because it is a lot of money. Vice Mayor?
There's two things. First, I would certainly be in agreement with joining with the county, with the board of supervisors and if they get some momentum going, who aren't our weight behind them in support of this. And maybe that can continue on and the sooner the better. Because obviously the budget, we've already passed our budget and it's gone by very quick. And I know staff the next day on, or Tuesday morning, they'll start working on next year's budget. And then another thing, another point of privilege, if I could, happy birthday to my wife. Her birthday's today. I'll be home soon. Thanks to the council. We're not having a long meeting. But 26 today.
You're taking her out, right?
What's that?
You're taking her out this evening?
That's nice.
Oh, okay. Well, happy birthday to you, Josh. And can I get a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
Second? And then all say?